Roll call.
Barshinger, Baum, here, Ramsey, Ricks.
Here.
Rorov.
Here.
Shear.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
White.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Barshinger and Ramsey are out this evening. We did have an executive session on April 28th for personnel, personnel purposes, sorry, tongue twister. I do have some people signed up to speak, but just as a reminder in public comment, please state your name, the township or borough that you reside in, and a reminder that public comment is for addressing the full board, not individual board members, and it is not used as a Q and A. First up on the list is Jacob Miller.
All right. Okay. All right, Jacob Miller, Jackson Township. So I want to comment today on some things I've observed at the last two board meetings. I saw the board hashing out options about what to do about the budget in a situation where inflation poses serious problems. Over the last few years, as inflation raged, the problems have been dealt with by canceling programs and staffing and lowering school quality and eating into our reserves. Two years ago, S and P's bond raiders thought we were doing badly and that the district didn't have a plan. So this is where we are. But there's something notable in the way that the majority of the board has talked about the problem. It's focused on cost. So Director White made a reference three weeks ago to a P and L statement, profit and loss. But we're talking about profit. Now, as a government body, obviously you don't have profit, but the school does deliver services and create value for students and for all of its stakeholders. So I heard people talking about what they can cut without people getting too upset, but I didn't hear anything about cost benefit analysis. I didn't hear anything about what the impacts of these cuts are to the district's stakeholders. So the leader in me program that's offered in the high school talks about paradigms and how you think about things. So to be successful in the, at the board, I think you need to be thinking about a paradigm with costs and benefits. So if you need numbers to make decisions, we have to have numbers for benefits. Now, education is difficult to value by, by definition. We know it's strongly related to future earnings, but there are lots of other places and lots of places we can look to see benefits that are produced by the school. If you don't do that, you're going to be cutting the highest costs without considering their impact and you are going to make the wrong decisions. When people spoke here at the last two meetings, they came to tell you stories about the value they derive primarily at a personal level. Many students talked about their personal connection with their music teachers, and that's really hard to put a number on, of course. But this is why I think the board is not on the same page as the citizens of the district. It's not that they don't care about the school's costs, but they're really focused on the value produced by the school. So most of these stories were personal, but one student pled for a social worker, a position to help students who are homeless and facing other non-school challenges that get in the way of their education. How many students, that, that position was not funded, but how many of those students do you think might go to cyber school in the next year? And how many of those you might be, think, uh, might be found to have special needs? Is it more than a three or four? Because this is a position with that social worker that has a break even, right? And so there are certainly ways it could cost the district more than the salary of that position. And so that's going to be key if you're trying to manage the district in a financially conservative manner. We have to look at the costs and the benefits. So I know HVAC upgrades are on the list to, to not be funded. How much will you save if you do undertake those? Will we save energy? Will we save money there? That's all part of the cost benefit analysis. What's the, what's the benefit to parents of having their students safe at the elementary levels? What would they be paying for childcare? That's a benefit to the parents, not necessarily to the students directly. What's the value to the community of having high school sports, particularly football? That is a gathering place. It's not zero. Don't, don't know what it is, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Our identity as rockets, for those of us who grew up here, there's a reason that you know you're not going to be trying to cut a lot of money from football because that's too important, even though it's not on the Keystone exam, it's not a minimum requirement, but it matters to the residents who are some of your stakeholders. When we talk about taxpayers, schools are a major source of value in real estate prices. We have to understand how the cuts that we make to the school or investments we make to the school, how that impacts property values. So taxes have gone up, but property values have gone up in the school district. So in the last 20 years, a state website, the values, property values in the Spring Grove School District over the last 20 years have gone up by $1 billion, 100 million. Property values have gone up 116%. That's an annualized 4%. And so if you want to compete with charter schools or compete with other districts and make no mistake, we are competing with charters and other districts, whether we want to or not, then we need headliners like Rocketry, Mock Trial, Odyssey, The Mind, Modern Band, all of this. So the thing is, uh, not all districts are competing. There are outsiders who are funding candidates to districts who are focused entirely on cost, not on benefit. That provides us an opportunity to run up the score on them, create more value for our district and outcompete them while they're still sitting on a bench. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Tharp.
I'm Jamie Tharp. I am a teacher as well as a taxpayer from Paradise Township. Couple of things I'm going to focus on today. The first is the Strive Tax Rebate Program. I'm not sure many people know about that. I have mentioned that and people are like, what is that? So what I would like to state is taxpayers can save up to $500 on a tax rebate by volunteering in our schools. We need you. We are being stretched thin. I have had the pleasure of working with Kathleen DeSello and Donna Zartman for the last, I want to say 10 to 15 years. They have been invaluable to things that I've had to do that I never would have been able to do on my own. We need more Donnas. We need more Kathlens. Unfortunately, for health reasons, I don't have those volunteers right now, but I could sure use other people that live in our district. The contact person is Kelly Nell. Some of the jobs are classroom aides, library aides, clerical aides, custodial, playground monitor, building and hall monitors. Next is substitutes. The board has requested that they want information. They want data. I'm here to provide some of that or at least point you in a direction. The district is saving thousands of dollars by not having substitutes for whatever reason. I am asked weekly to cover classes that are not my own. I do it because it's my job. But I will tell you, not only does it not benefit the kids that I miss seeing, but it also doesn't benefit myself, my mental health, my personal strive to be the best at my job that I can be because I am now splitting my focus amongst several different things. I would love to go into work, know that I'm going to do my job for the day. I do not know on any given day if I'm going to do the job I am being paid for. We have very good substitutes that have been with us, like my Strive volunteers for many years that are leaving our district. Next on the agenda is the logo. I did question Dr. Bradley and sent a note which he forwarded to all of the board members. This is not a, should it be used, shouldn't it be used? This is, permission must be obtained to use the logo outside of the official district publications, promotions or, or sales. According to the solicitor, this is not enforceable. I respectfully ask whether it serves a practical purpose or if it should be revised for clarity and consistency to avoid the logo being used without permission in the future. As a member of this district and a taxpayer, I do not wish for my name to be associated with any form of misleading representation, regardless of the party or individuals involved. I firmly believe that political agendas have no place within our educational environment. Our focus must remain on the students, the most valuable investment in our future and not on partisan interest. What some may consider this matter closed, the continued use of the Rocket logo and any appearance of favoritism toward political parties, businesses or any entities should be addressed and avoided in the future. Thank you. The Wellness Center. I personally use the Wellness Center because when my spouse could not be covered, I lost $6,000 that we had to make up. The Wellness Center is invaluable to me personally. They have helped me become healthier and I firmly believe with Nancy's consistent care, I will live longer. The last thing I would like to state is I'm not sure where the numbers the gentleman came up with last week, but I wanted to state for the record that teachers do not get their lunches paid for except for the first day of school. We do not get overtime and I do not get my Starbucks paid for, even if I did drink coffee, which I don't. Thank you for your time.
Next I have Jason Stauffer.
Hi, everybody. Just first off, I wanted to thank and recognize the board for the time that they dedicate to the community and our students in Spring Grove. So thank you. Oh yes, Jason Stauffer, taxpayer, parent. Yep. Uh, Spring Grove Borough. Yep. Uh, so yes, I'm Jason Stauffer. Little bit about me, I'm part of the ownership group at Christmas Tree Hill, which is privately owned, third generation, founded in York over 50 years ago. I'm a systems manager, HR supervisor and buyer among many other titles that come along with a family owned business with multiple locations. And I have three children in the district, three at the middle school, or I'm sorry, two at the middle school and one at SGE. And we've lived in the borough for the last 11 years. I felt compelled to speak tonight ahead of the budget vote to throw my support behind what many of our fantastic community members and youth have already voiced to you all over the last several weeks leading up to your important budget voting. It's absolutely vital that we maintain and continue to grow Spring Grove area schools as a premier destination for families in York and the surrounding areas. We moved to Spring Grove area school district from Dallas Town School District, my alma mater, because of many reasons, and I'm going to go into a few of them here. It's a perfect balance of high quality education, affordable properties and a small town, close knit feel compared to other school districts out there. But firstly, the reputation of Spring Grove's elite music program, which I have two musicians currently in the program with another one on the way in second grade. Their music education and support from the music department from elementary up to the high school has been everything that we signed up for and more. We could have gone to many other school districts and received similar or identical math and ELA education due to our state's very standardized guidelines. This elite music program was a most important differentiating factor in our coming to this district. And the board's yes vote last week to Phil Mr. Showalter and Mrs. Gross, Gross's upcoming vacancies was a, was a show of good faith to families like ours and you all that, that you all value, not just math and ELA proficiency, but also developing the kind of work ethic, resilience and creativity that employers like Christmas Tree Hill are looking for in future hires. You must maintain adequate budget funding for the music department for the 25, 26 school year and beyond. As a taxpayer, if this means raising our taxes, please, I beg you, raise our taxes. Secondly, please reconsider your position on cutting the district wide social worker position. School isn't like it was when we were kids and staff struggle to connect kids with resources that, that offer basic needs or meet their basic needs. Lastly, I understand that when running any institution or business, whether public or private, you win or lose based on the efficiency with which you achieve your profitability and budgeting goals. Now, I know you don't make a profit, but you know, you're different, you know, you know what I mean? And I can also tell you from my almost 20 years of business and finance experience at a company that's existed for over 50 years, facing just about every situation imaginable, that a high quality professional staff at every level, along with a product that provides value to the community is the driver to achieving those goals. There is however, a breakpoint where if you drop staffing below a certain level, you cannot retain existing high quality staff due to unsustainable workloads. I fully support increased funding to maintain existing high quality staff at all levels at Spring Grove area schools, as well as maintaining our standing in the York area to attract high quality new staff. As a taxpayer, is if this means raising our taxes, please, I beg you, raise our taxes. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you so much.
Becky Strauss.
Becky Strauss, Hightower Township. Unfortunately, the only answers that I've been hearing are to raise the taxes by as much as 4.37, stating that it's only $10 a month for a $100,000 house. I'm not sure where you're finding those in Spring Grove, according to all the realtors I've spoken to. But putting that aside, that $10 a month may not seem like anything to you. Somebody just said about Starbucks. That's, but that's an elderly person or a single parent or someone on disability, you name it. That's them deciding on medicine or gas in their tank to get to that doctor's appointment. How can we be okay with asking people to do that? Instead of holding those people accountable that have put us in this situation and asking the hard question of why are we in this, in this situation? Where can the spending be stopped? Every penny needs to be counted for. Right down to the drinks that you guys have. Somebody brought that up. It's those small items. I am a huge penny pincher in my house. It's a big deal that created a huge issue. So now with the upcoming hiring drive bound to be happening, somebody asked me the average pay of our teachers. So I Googled it, as anyone can, and it states that salaries range from only 1173 for an elementary teacher to 1481 for an hour for an assistant teacher. But according to Indeed, we have a social studies teacher making 62,481 a year. That seems like quite a substantial jump. I understand that teachers, custodial staff, cafeteria bus drivers, we are all underpaid for what we do. We're all stretched and it's just not fair. But that doesn't give any of us the right to abuse that taxpayer dollar for ourselves. It only takes five of yous to take that water bottle at each meeting. 22 meetings a year, a 35 tax on sale for 5.88 right now. Five into 35 is only seven, so you need three cases. That's all but $20 and that's only this meeting for you guys. You get five more meetings or other people that take water and that's easily $100 on water. It's all of these small things that add up. This is just one example of the small things. I'm sure that there are more that can be found. We just need to be more responsible, setting examples for our children, or we will fail if we continue on this path.
Thank you. Brandon Huffnagle.
Brandon Huffnagle, Jackson Township, Eric. I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you said something, sorry. I just want to circle back to something that was brought up by a board member a few meetings ago and want to ask the board to continue looking at it. It's changing your policy on recording meetings and posting that. Haven't seen any movement yet on that and curious if you guys can start moving that. I think a lot of the public would like to see it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none. Anyone, any board members would like to address anything that was said this evening? All right. Moving on to district admin departmental reports, starting with the transportation service department first.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Pepperman and I am the transportation coordinator for the district. I am finishing up my first year here in June. And prior to coming to the district, I was a supervisor of transportation for West Shore School District where we transported over 6,500 students on a daily basis. For my report this evening, I wanted to focus on some lesser known aspects of transportation. Most people, when they think of transportation, they think of the big yellow school bus that's going down the road and transportation is a lot more than that. Bus patrol is our stop arm camera system on the buses. Since the beginning of the school year through the end of March, 280 citations have been issued. The majority of the violations occur on Route 616 in New Salem Borough and the 5100 block to the 7100 block of Lincoln Highway. And the majority of the violations occur in the afternoon. Since the report that I sent to you last week, we are now up to 49 homeless and foster students that we transport. These students reside in various areas in the district and outside of the district. Some of the areas outside of the district that we have homeless students residing in are York City, East York, Hanover, Wellsville, Shrewsbury and Red Lion. We do attempt to work with the school district that the student is residing in for the transportation. For example, we may do the AMPs for the student and the district they are residing in may do the PMPs. As a comparison, West York School District has 37 students, homeless students that they transport. The next three groups of students that I'll be talking about, non-public students, special education placements and early intervention pre-k students. I'd like to point out that all of these students are transported based on their school's calendar, not Spring Grove's calendar, which means we have students in school that we are transporting on days that Spring Grove students have off. And especially with the special education placements and the early intervention students, due to the location of some of these schools that these students go to, they do have a dedicated van because the timing of the routes does not fit for that vehicle to assist with another piece of transportation. We transport 191 non-public students to 21 different non-public schools. And I'd also like to add that we are mandated by the state to transport non-public students to schools up to 10 miles outside of our district boundaries. So we are currently transporting non-public students to schools in New York City, East York, Dover, McSherrystown, Hanover, Red Lion and Gettysburg. And yes, I did say Gettysburg because Gettysburg Montessori is 9.2 miles outside of our district. Special education placement students. We are currently transporting 48 students to 14 different placement schools that are located inside and outside of our district. We transport students to placement schools in Conawaygo Valley, Dallas Town, Red Lion, York, East Berlin and even Lancaster. Our early intervention pre-k students, we currently transport 10 of those students and they go to Bermudian Springs, the Western PA School for the Death located in Hershey, the York Learning Center, Dover Elementary and the Hanover First Church of God. And I'd also like to point out that the transportation we are obligated to provide for these early intervention pre-k students is not reimbursable by the state. Couple of the challenges in transportation is the district does not own its own transportation terminal, which means we are at the mercy of the contractor that we have for them to locate a terminal in area that is ideally centrally located in our district to house buses, vans, mechanics, so they can work on the vehicles. And the district is approximately 96 square miles, which is pretty large. And we have vehicles that travel at least 15 to 20 minutes to get to their first stop. So that is something that needs to be taken into account when routing is being done. And before I close, I just would like to give a shout out to our bus and van drivers and the mechanics at Christ and thank them for what they do day in and day out because we would not be able to educate our students if we did not, were not able to get them to and from school. So thank you.
All right, moving on to nutrition services.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Holly McQuay. I'm the Nutrition Services Manager here. I've been here since July of 2024. And since I came here, I did, I've worked at a previous district, Fairfield Area School District. Prior to that, I did work within the nursing home healthcare world for about 10 years. Two major, or one major difference as far as what coming into a school district versus different guidelines and regulations is we have to forego two health inspections in a 180 day period versus in a healthcare setting or restaurant setting, it's only one in a 365 day span. And just to report, this year we did pass all of our health inspections. So that's something to be proud of. Also, some highlights as far as for the nutrition program following guidelines for school breakfast and national school lunch program. The universal free breakfast are continuing until further notice. For the past three years, I know I had put on there for district wide in 22, 23, breakfast, free breakfast served for over 168,000 for 23, 24 school year was over 184,000. Breakfast served up until March this year. I don't have April's numbers in there yet or May. Breakfast are at 132,000 and we project that to be much higher. Within our schools, we've seen increased numbers participating in the free breakfast program recently at SGE, New Salem and the high school. Positive impacts that this can correlate for the universal free breakfast are they create better nutrition, reduce food insecurities, reduce absences, tardiness, improve academic performance and help to reduce behavioral problems and help support struggling families. Few other items that I would like to present tonight are the opening of the IAC Rocket Fuel Cafe. Later on, I'll just, I'll go into greater detail, but currently we have 31 students that are volunteering their time through, through various programs. And during the budget discussion, I'll go into greater detail. Future challenges that the nutrition services department will be facing are the tariffs. I'm sure all of you have heard about tariffs coming. As of right now, we will be keeping the meal prices the same for next school year, but we will be reevaluating after next school year, depending on how that affects our meals. Subs are very limited within our school district. And I do want to take a moment just to thank all of our principals, SROs, secretaries, custodial staff, any other support staff that has helped greatly with getting our meals throughout the day for breakfast and lunches for our students. Without them, we wouldn't be able to function some days. So I appreciate all their help and dedication to helping us out. Openings currently, we have one full-time lead cook position and we have three part-time nutrition support positions as well that are open. Coming in the future are also going to be storage issues. As you know, the tech center is going to be under renovation. So with that being said, a lot of our commodities that are stored there for the whole district, that's going to be a challenge for us that we're going to have to look into, especially refrigeration and freezer. You know, dry goods, it's a little bit easier to store them, but the other options are not as easily to store. SGI is one of our smaller kitchens. So just imagine you can store maybe a week's worth of extra food, but in some of the larger buildings, you can do maybe two weeks. It, it all depends on what the meals are because obviously different meals. all depends on what the meals are because obviously different meals have different box sizes. So that's going to be a huge issue when that time comes. To close, a few goals for next year are promoting more universal free breakfast to help increase those numbers, promote students with new menu items and recipes, promote harvest of the month items, and help to expand the Rocket IAC Fuel Cafe. So, thank you all for your time and I thank my staff as well for all that they do to continue to provide for our children here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any correspondence. We will move into action voting items. Moving on to Personnel with Mr. Stein.
Personnel Board Actions Requested. Item A, Teacher Resignation. Acceptance of the following resignations. Item 1, Noah St. Haylick, Learning Support Teacher. Item B, Nutrition Support Department Resignation. Acceptance of the following support staff. Item 1, Tammy Flickinger, Part-Time Nutrition Support. Item C, Teacher Substitute. Approval of the following individuals as listed. Item D, Act 86, Day-to-Day Substitute. Approval of the following, Act 86 Substitute, Hannah Green. Item E, Athletics. Approval of the following coaches for the '25-'26 season as listed. Item F, Game Manager, Interscholastic Personnel. Approval of the following. Item 1, Erin Haversen. Item G, Summer Pre-K Support Staff. Approval of the following, Support Staff. Item 1, Michelle Soraco. Item H, Summer School Program. Approval of the following, Instructional Staff as listed. Item I, Extended School Year Instructors. Approval of the following, Instructional Staff as listed. Item J, Extended School Year Support Staff. Approval of the following, Support Staff as listed. So moved on Personnel.
Second?
Second.
Any, any discussion?
I had one question about the Extended School Year. How many weeks does that run? Is that all summer, like every day during the summer? Oh. Okay. Okay. The other question I had is, I presume we do transportation? And do we have the cafeteria up and running for them? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote on Personnel. Yes. Moving on to Curriculum with Mrs. Baum.
Curriculum Board Actions Requested. Letter A, Trip Request. Approval for Paxton Drumheller High School ELA Teacher to accompany six eligible high school students to Odyssey of the Mind World Finals in, at Michigan State University, May 21st to the 25th, 2025. So moved on Curriculum Board Actions.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call vote on Curriculum.
White?
Yes.
Roarbaum?
Yes. Motion to adjourn the action voting meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Calling to order the Director's Study Forum. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none. We are going to adjust the agenda this evening. We are going to start with the Program Committee so we can get all of our teachers up and presenting so they do not need to feel that they need to stay the entire evening. So we are going to start with the Program Committee. Mrs. Baum?
All right. Under Curriculum Number One, we have the '25-'26 Proposed New Revised Curricula, and we'll have Steve discuss that and then he'll roll into the Dual Enrollment Affiliation Agreements that we have. And the major trip proposal.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Baum. As you can see, the first thing up is our new and proposed curriculum. This is the same memo you've had for the last month. As I've mentioned before, we have literally 100 courses that were either revised or created. Tonight, we have the opportunity for any questions that we might have. We have administrators and staff who worked on these courses here and available to answer any questions that you might have. And our goal is to move this forward so that you can approve them at the next meeting so that we can begin and spend the time this summer getting ready to implement these courses next year. So I will turn it over to any questions we may have and hopefully we have people here who can address any questions that you might have.
How many of these are new, you know, roughly?
Yeah, they're, they're organized in, by the way that they're, like by what you're asking. So, brand-new courses would be the top of the list from the start of the memo. We have four under the business. We have one under ELA. And so on down the line, the, the ones that were just straight-up rewritten, meaning they were in their curriculum cycle, are the ones at the bottom of the memo. So they were, they're not new at all. And on the second page, those were all in the curriculum cycle. So there was their time to rewrite. And each one of those links takes you to a whole folder of the courses because they're organized by grade level and then the high school, the different courses. So, does that answer?
Yep. Thank you.
And my question is, and maybe, maybe you will or will not have information on this, but I know we're moving to block at the high school. So, how do you anticipate, so we have a lot of courses, which is great, but how do you anticipate going to block? Going to block, how will it impact all of these classes that we have available for students?
So now you're, you're asking not necessarily about these courses, but the whole catalog?
About the whole catalog. So, and do we have minimum? Minimum?
Doctor Dietrich could, she's like the-
In terms of, if, if, let's say we get eight people that signed up, is there a threshold that we say yea or nay?
Yeah. Doctor Dietrich can address that.
As he approaches the podium to address that, you know, one thing we're looking at is being able to offer a half-credit class for nine weeks so that, you know, you would be able to have for the block and then have multiple electives during your career. And that, that'd be one way to address that. And then we would have fresh opportunities for our students. But Doctor Dietrich?
Yep. So, to answer the simple question first, yes, we do have minimums. Generally, when we're introducing new courses, we're a little more flexible. For example, last year, we offered APR history for the first time. So we went below the minimum so we could get the course in and see how it ran. This year, we're below the minimum for APR history. We're not offering it. So, we have, I think, about 230 courses. Am I correct? About 230 courses in our catalog. We do not offer every course every year. It depends on the student's course selections. So their course selections drive what we offer. Yeah. So, half-credit elective will meet for 45 days. In a traditional schedule, that would generally be 90 days. It'll be 45 days now. A full-credit course would be 90 days for half the year. We do have two courses this year that we increased to two credits, AP Chemistry and AP Biology. We saw, after evaluating how other districts were offering them, the amount of time that they were giving to them, that we needed to up the amount of time that we were giving to those courses as well. So, we make adjustments as we need to. We continue to evaluate the courses that are doing really well and that are growing. FCS numbers, two years ago, were very, very low. This year, they're very, very high, right? And so it kind of ebbs and flows as well.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I do have kind of probably a dumb question, but if our teachers are so busy, how do we add all these extra courses?
Typically, the way it works is that, that if, if the teachers have a desire to teach a new course or come up with an idea that they're interested in, they would approach the administration at the high school and propose it to them. If they feel that it's something that they would want to support, they would submit the proposal to me and I bring it to you guys in the fall. So, they're, they're coming from the teachers who have a desire, they're interested, they think students would be interested in it, so that that's when they create a new course. To answer part of your question, I think is, and Doctor Dietrich mentioned it, it's, something's probably going to drop off. You can only take so many courses, they can only teach so many courses. So some of the courses that would, students aren't as interested in or they wouldn't be signing up for, they kind of fall to the bottom. These other courses fall, come up to the top. But again, if no one, if students don't, aren't, take them, then they don't ever, just because they're on the list doesn't mean we teach it every year. Any other questions? I'd like to thank the administrators and the teachers for coming tonight to be available for the questions. We know, we go through this process each year and, like I said, we propose them in the spring or in the fall and then we bring them as, as they're written and then have them available to answer any questions. So I appreciate their coming. All right, we'll keep moving. The second thing on the list is a dual, another dual enrollment affiliation agreement. Actually, it's the summary. I believe Mr. Stein asked for a listing of all of our agreements and, and kind of a summary. So we're providing that to you. It breaks it down into dual enrollments, college and the high school, and our affiliation agreements. And then it's also indicating whether it's focused on students or teachers or staff. So I believe that would answer any questions you may have. If you have additional questions about that, you can always ask and I will get those answers for you.
Yeah, I guess my question was, I was curious to see the list, but also, my, also, my concern was, you know, is it good to have that many? I was just worried, you know, we're spreading ourselves thin. Is it costing us more to have that many or is there no extra cost?
No, it doesn't. There's no extra cost. It's actually, how it works is if, if these organizations would like to have their students come and do something in the district, we have to have an agreement with them to, in order for it to happen. So, if we have student teachers or other people who are doing observations or practicums, we have to have that in place for it to occur. We want to encourage it if we can. So we would establish the agreement so that we can accept their students. Hopefully the- Correct. Correct. It's just more options for people to come in. And then on the other end of it, the affiliation agreements that we have are dual enrollments where the more we have, the more our students have options to take classes with those agreements, you know, with those places. So it's more, those are more options for our students, our current students. The other one, the affiliation agreements are more for student teachers and cooperating teachers and things like that, but we want to promote that as well. Yep, no problem.
And Doctor G, just to add to that, at any one given time, there aren't students from all these affiliation agreements. There could, it could just be, we have the affiliation agreement and they may do pre-student teaching where they just come and observe for a couple of days, or they're in full-fledged student teaching where they actually take over a course eventually and they take over grade level. So at any one given time, just because we have from Albright College down through York College, there aren't student teachers in every building every day. So it's, it's a, it's a-
Absolutely, absolutely. The list grows, yes. And then our final, our final thing on, for, this is a proposal for a major trip. This is actually a trip for next summer. You can see the descriptions of the trip. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
All right. Moving on to Business and Finance Committee, Budget and Finance with Mr. White.
So, as I get started here for this evening, we're going to have our agenda for this evening. Going to break it down into a couple parts. I'm going to give an overview to start here. Jen Lepo is going to give a little bit more details on the '24-'25 budget and then I'll wrap up. And then I'm going to turn it over to Holly McQuay. As she mentioned, she's going to be presenting the Nutrition Services budget. So, our agenda for this evening, as I mentioned, status our fiscal year '24-'25, and then we'll roll right into our '25-'26 budget. Thank you, Bill. Show you our military discussion and then finally stop with, or wrap up with our adoption schedule. So, as we're wrapping up this '24-'25 year, we've talked about this a couple of times over the past, since January. Our audited beginning fund balance there hasn't changed, $3.9 million. Our revenues are coming in slightly higher than what was budgeted and expenses slightly lower than what was budgeted as well. And you can see our ending fund balance there. We are anticipating a deficit of approximately $630,000. Jen's going to give a little bit more details for you on how we got, where we're at here on our revenues as well as our expenditures. So I'll turn it now over to Jen.
Good evening. I just wanted to highlight again what I had spoke to on, at last month at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. If you recall, we budgeted about a $3.2 million deficit for '24-'25. And I reported out last month about a $500,000 loss or deficit. It is coming in a little bit higher, about $630,000. Again, mainly that is due to increased revenue. And again, just to highlight some of the larger variances in our local revenue, we're about $145,000 over in our current real estate. Again, just to give you some information on how we budget for real estate, we take the assessed value, the latest one we have, which we just received in April, we get that from the county about mid-April. And then we do not get another one until the tax bills come out, until we issue our tax bills. So, we don't account for much growth from April till July. So, again, there's a small variance there in real estate tax collection. EIT is coming in about 5.6% higher than budgeted. And again, that adjustment, that, that higher earnings that we're seeing has been adjusted for the '25-'26 budget. Again, interest earnings, a tough one to project. Everything that we were hearing from our professionals were that the interest rates were going to drop. And we were able to hold pretty steady around 5% for investment options. And then the third one there is just tuition from other LEAs. And again, that is mainly special ed students that are taking advantage of classrooms here within the district. Again, as far as state revenue goes, our charter school reimbursement that we received was new for this year. That was part of the governor's budget last year. We received $203,000 for cyber charter, charter school reimbursement. However, just to note again, that that has already been removed out of the '25-'26 budget, governor's budget. So we have no idea if we're going to be receiving any, any revenue from that. At this point in time, there was no money budgeted in that line item for cyber school reimbursement because it was not part of the governor's budget. The Ready to Learn Adequacy piece is also new for '24-'25. That, we received an additional $402,000. We did not plan on that for this year. In next year's budget, the governor does keep that $402,000 in there as our base. And he is requesting an additional, which for us, for the district, for Spring Grove, our increase would be about $402,000 again for next year. That is not in the budget at this point in time because again, the way we have budgeted state revenue in the past, we've been conservative on that. This is kind of an area that's going through legislation and we have no idea where that's going to land. So at this point in time, it's not included. Special ed, again, that was just the amount over budget that came in. And again, we have special ed and BEF in exactly where PDE is projecting our district to land for next year. So there's no, no, we're not budgeting based on this year. We're budgeting on, based on what PDE is projecting us to be at for next year. Again, we talked about the transportation subsidy. We're receiving about $700,000 additional in transportation subsidies. And I had commented out, again, that has to do with every variable in the equation for transportation has increased- in the equation for transportation has increased as Kristin reported, as our costs go up too, our reimbursement will go up. So we have seen, of course, the number of vans and stuff increase, which will also increase the subsidy too. So again, that impacts all factors of the transportation formula, and that increase is included in next year's budget. As far as federal revenue goes, we're not really seeing any variance in the Title I programs for that. So again, if, Suzanne, if you go to the next slide, do I have, you have it, I'm sorry. So overall, our total revenue is coming in about 2.7 million over budget. And again, I highlighted the ma, the major variances there on the revenue side. Total expenditures, we're coming in pretty close to where we budgeted, we're slightly under budgeted. And again, that has to do with some unfilled vacancies and also just controlling costs throughout the year. And that's how we're coming up with a projection of $630,000 for the deficit.
Thank you, Jen. So we, we take that information that Jen just went into detail with, and as you noticed over the past couple of months, we built the budget around, you know, the information that Jen just provided us there. And, and what we did was, we updated our, our, our budget, our proposed final budget that we presented in April to show the following. So we're now seeing a beginning fund balance of $3.2 million, updated revenues at 86.8 million, expenses at 86.8, our ending fund balance at 3.2. So we're showing a, a almost a balanced budget of four, a little over $4,000. As you can see there, the, our draft of this 25, 26 budget is with a 3.9% increase. I did mention at last Monday's meeting that we would be closer to a 4.3. We're going to go into a little bit more detail of how we've got that down to that 3.9. Jen went into some of those details here with, with additional revenues and some of the, the savings, but we're going to get into a little bit more here. So before I start about the positions, I just want to remind everyone that when we, when we built this budget with, with the site administrators here in November and December, we removed approximately $620,000 from their budget. So some of the site administrators are here tonight and can, can verify that. This was the first time that we actually have ever done that to the site administrators. We removed, like I said, approximately $620,000 from their budgets, as well as a couple of months ago, we showed you additional reductions of approximately $720,000. And that included substitutes. We had talked about personnel as far as parking for events, supplies throughout the districts, software programs that we're currently using in the business offices as what others, some future technology and maintenance that we're going to be taking out of our, our bond proceeds. So all that in, in general, we, we built this budget around removing that $1.3 million to start before we even went to the attritional savings that was, was presented to you last Monday night. So last Monday night, very long meeting, but we, we walked away with the following positions here that are, that are seen here, that are into this 25, 26 budget. So you can see the positions there that are currently in our 25, 26 budget. And what we did was, there were some, when, when we built the budget, or when we presented the budget, we had some names and some numbers in here. So what we did was, we went back, fine tuned this, and you can see the building administrator costs and the professional staff listed below there, $125,000 each. What we did was, we went middle of the range, master level, step one for those positions, and then the building administrator at, at that current cost. So we were able, able to fine tune this a little bit to get to the, the necessary mileage rate needed to balance the budget. So as you can see there for the 24, 25 year, we're currently at a 24.4, 4535 mileage rate. In order to balance the 25, 26 budget, we would need a .9536 mileage. So our mileage for the 25, 26 year would be at 25.4071. Now, asking yourself, okay, what, what, what does this look like as far as, you know, if, if we were to, to, to look at other potential mileage increases somewhat lower than that 3.9%? So you can see on the first column there, we have our beginning fund balance. The second column is our tax increase. So on the bottom there, you would see a 3.9. The, the revenue that we would get in from that 3.9 from our real estate, additional real estate would be $1.7 million. So we would end with a, like I said, a, a balanced budget of $4,250. Our ending fund balance would stay somewhat similar to what we're finishing this year with, $3.2 million, which for us would be, we would not want to dip deeper into our, 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 our fund, our, our fund balance. As you can see there, what we just presented for the 24, 25 year, we are going to dip into a little bit of $630,000. Anything else this year just continues to lower that, that ending fund balance. So as you can see there, what a, what the corresponding tax increase, if it went below that 3.9, the red column there would be what our resulting deficit would be. If we would look at tax considerations, just this morning, we were able to update this slide, we actually received assessed information from the county, as Jen mentioned. We're at their mercy on when they give us information, updated information. So you can see on that third column there, the annual tax increase, $134,000 assessed value would be the average assessed home in Spring Grove. Now, we're not talking about what a price of a home is. So if you're selling a home for $134,000, the assessed value may be a little bit different. That assessed value for homes are, is what is used for us, for, for our mileage rate. So Spring Grove wide, the average home is $134,000. So we use that and to show what a potential mileage rate of 3.9 would be, that would be $132.78 per year, or an additional $11 per month. What we did was, that fifth column there, in six, you would see the, what we did was, we added an additional $100,000 to an average assessed value of $134,000 to make it 234. So if you had a 234,000 assessed value property in Spring Grove, you would be looking at approximately $231 a year, or about $19.30 a month in additional taxes. Where does that rate us with the county? As you can see there, a little bit difficult to see, but you can see the blue column there. Spring Grove is, is basically right in the center with, to, to the left is Dover. We're kind of like right in the middle there in the, in the county. If we were to go up to that 3.9% and that, and that additional mileage rate, we would, we, we could potentially bump West York to our right there if they decided not to raise taxes. But at this point, we would be somewhat still in the middle there with, with the additional tax increase. So that's my final slide here. What we would need is from the board is, we've looked at the proposed final budget that was approved on April 5th at 2.75. We're showing you a final budget of 3.9, and we would be looking for that approval on May 19th in two weeks. And now I'll turn it over to the rest of you for any questions or comments.
Mr. Zap, I wanted to thank you and Mrs. Lepo for this presentation, and I know you guys have put in a lot of long hours and, and just trying to get all the figures as exact and sharpen your pencil as often as you can, and that's multiple times a day, and I thank you for that. One thing I was hoping, well, two, two actual notes, I was hoping you could clarify for our public, is something that's very applicable in Spring Grove area school district is our collection rates. We, I, I don't, I tried to look at the statistic real quick, and I know that we're, we outpace the Commonwealth of the 500 school districts, we, we outpace the Commonwealth. And if you could just comment on what our collection rate is and what that means, and I put you on the spot because I didn't prompt you for this and I apologize, but if you could just comment on our collection rates.
Yeah, so our current collection rate for the Spring Grove School District is slightly above 96%, which is, you know, as you mentioned, way above the average for the, for the state. What that means is 90, 96% of our, of our taxpayers pay their tax bill is basically, in a nutshell, what that means, whether it's at face value, or whether it's during the discount period, or whether it's, you know, it's before the penalty period. So, but yeah, it's a, it's, it's something that we've actually had a, a really good tax collection rate here over the past number of years, so, yeah.
Thank you. In the past, I've entered in agreements with people that will try to go after delinquent, but you know, obviously they want paid to do that. There's not much, you know, effort for us to do that because we're only at a very low 3%.
Correct.
Uncollected tax, taxable income.
Correct.
Or taxable revenue.
Yeah, it's actually, when you, when you're walking through some of the conferences and there's companies out there that are like, hey, Spring Grove, come over here, let me tell you a little bit about my business and what we can do for you. And then when you tell your tax collection rate, they're like, okay, thank you, grab a, grab a pen and see you later. We don't, we're not going to get any business from you, so.
The, the other note that you, you hit on very well, and, and I thank you for that, but I think it's worth repeating, is the difference between appraised value and assessed value. So I get my house appraised because I want to sell it, and the realtor is going to tell me one number, the assessed value that comes from our taxing entities is different. If you could just comment on, again, I think that's an educational piece for me and for our community.
Yep, so I know as many of you know, my wife is in real estate, so I'm, I'm considered the expert, which I'm not, but, so yeah, so you can have a, you can have a property, you can have a property where you, you purchased the house for, let's say, $300,000, and it could be appraised at $135,000. So it depends on when the last appraiser was, if you had any improvements to it, that could bring out, you know, somebody from, from the county, or I mean, from the township to be able to take a look at your, your, the value of your property and do an appraisal. But the appraisal and the, the assessed value and the actual sale price of the house are two totally different numbers, and, and you cannot confuse them. So great question.
And, and just the last, and I appreciate the board allowing me to speak while you formulate your questions. You talked about the, the efforts that all the different departments, you know, when I look out there and I see Bill and, you know, Kristin and, and you know, all the different principals, all the efforts that took place prior to any consideration of any attritional savings. That amount, that equivalent was over $600,000, and then other areas of the school that we looked at before any attritional savings. And I wanted to comment on that as well. And, and in that conversation, you also mentioned substitutes. That's a very specific category of substitutes, not our daily educational substitutes. If you could comment on that, I think to clarify what substitutes you were specifically speaking of.
Yeah, so great, great question, and thank you for pointing that out. I'm sorry for the miscommunication, but our substitutes are for the, any of our support staff. We have, we have, like, say for example, if, if we have a, a substitute who may be working on a project like somebody in, say for example, our building there, the ESC, we sometimes use substitutes to help out for certain projects. So we do budget a line item every year for that, and what we did was, we reduced that, and we do reduce it drastically. Second thing is, and I'm not going to, you know, try to embarrass, but I think one of the individuals here who I looked out for was Dr. Dietrich. I, myself and Jen spent a lot of time in his office, reducing his budget, the overall high school staff, and it was a good thing. We were, you know, we were back and forth, you know, getting that as, as, number one, we had talked about the historical spend, getting it to the historical spend, but actually having those conversations with different departments, he did an outstanding job at going back and forth. There was never any, you know, any conflict. We were like, hey, we've got, we've got to get it down even lower. And it was, like I said, it was the first time that we had to do that ever. Yeah, you know, there was years before where, you know, where we may have had to, you know, bring in, have it, have it a little bit of a conversation, but never to this point where we had multiple, multiple meetings, getting those, getting the budget. And it wasn't something that all we had to do was ask, and they were, each site administrator was doing that, as you mentioned there, Bill, Chris, Kristen, everybody. Everybody was doing that this year for the first time ever, so, good question.
Thank you, Mr. Zap. You know, just my reflection on the substitute class that you were talking about, in the education world, there are, there are times whenever just cyclical things become very impactful that take several employees away from their job, job, and I'll give you an example, clearances. You know, we, we all have to have our clearances, and at times it was beneficial to the district in the past to say, hey, if we could just bring a human in for that specific project to help with clearances and the collation of clearances and confirmation of clearances, and notifications of employees like, hey, you have two weeks, you have one week, you have one day, all those things to get that clearance in, it was beneficial. And what we looked at now is saying that the people that that's assigned to your position is going to continue to be assigned to your position. So we do look at their, the, the capacity of those employees to be able to do that without that extra help. And, and we are seeing that that capacity is not like a rubber band that will stretch forever, that rubber band will break. So we're, we're looking at the capacity of all of our staff members, and, and that happened well before any attritional savings took place.
Correct.
And, and I thank you for that, and I thank you and Mrs. Lepo again for the presentation, and we'll turn it over again for the board. Any comments from the board or any questions for the board?
I, I have a question. At the beginning of the year, what we were looking at for a deficit then, do you remember that? What was it?
So just to clarify, for this current year's budget or for the 25, 26?
Current year budget.
We were looking at approximately 3.2. Correct. And then, Mr. Shear, so just, these, these variances here are the reasoning, basically are the reasoning why we went from a 3.2 to approximately a $630,000. So as Jen mentioned, and I want her, because she's into this detail every day, the reasoning why we went from a 3.2 to a slightly over $630,000. And I've got to applaud her and her work for this because we're getting, we're getting more accurate numbers every year that, that she's into this. If you can, if you can, just in my number of years here, this is the closest we've been in a number of these, in these line items, like for example, the very first one there, $145,000 in our current real estate. If you think about that, like we have approximately, we collect approximately $43 million, $43 million, and she's got it right to home as $145,000. That's incredible. I mean, that, that's incredible. You can easily just put a number in there and just say, okay, $43 million, but when you get it to that point, it's incredible. And some of these other ones, like for example, the $350,000 in interest earning, when you're talking about $43 million and the amount of interest that we, that we collect, not interest that we can earn, that's another incredible number, knowing that, you know, what was, what our professionals had told us last year. If anybody can tell me what next year's interest is going to be, I would love to know that. But she does an outstanding job at getting these numbers as, as close to accurate as possible because it makes my job easier as I'm presenting this, so.
And, and I think, Mr. Zap, another great example that, you know, we're all becoming more educated on is the fair funding lawsuit. So we were a party at Spring Grove to a fair funding lawsuit against the Commonwealth, against the state, saying you are not funding schools adequately. Through our membership with Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools and others, some districts went in alone, others joined collectively, we joined collectively as a member of PARs. That lawsuit ended saying that the organizations, PARs in the school districts, were right, and now we're in the penalty phase. We're in the phase of how do you fix it? There has been almost zero conversation about how do you actually fix the fact that the lawsuit came out in benefit of the school district, saying the state is not funding us correctly. So part of it is that adequacy money. Mrs. Lepo, if you want to comment on that, I know you're very knowledgeable on this, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for bringing that up. That adequacy piece that we talked about, that 402,000 is a result of, of the lawsuit. The, the question is, is from the state, is how can they continue to maintain it and sustain the amount and continue to fund districts fairly? So that's always going to be a challenge, and that's why it's a challenge when we look at the additional money that they're proposing. Do we include it, don't we include it? I feel like it's a gamble. I haven't really heard any conversation in Harrisburg around the adequacy piece at all, so. Yeah. The only other comment I wanted to make is, on the state level, we did get our certified amount for their property reduction, and we are getting about a $200,000 increase. This is, if anyone has a homestead, farmstead property, you get a reduction on your tax bill. We're getting about additional $200,000. So anyone in the district that has a homestead or farmstead can expect about, and again, this was a quick calculation, but another, an additional $30 reduction compared to last year from that. reduction compared to last year from that increase. So that is one positive.
Yeah. And, and that's gambling revenue.
Correct.
That is divided up amongst all 500 school districts. So go to your casinos, gamble and help us out.
And thank you, thank you, Jen, for pointing that out because where's my slide? So one of the things to think about here is if you have it, if you are in that farmstead, hemstead and you're at the, number one, the, the top, the first row there, the initial budget, 3.9, if we were at 100, if we went with a 3.9% tax increase for next year, your rate would be $100 instead of approximately $101 instead of that 132. So great point. I forgot that. Thank you, Jen. Any other questions from the board?
Well, yeah, I'm not done yet.
Nope, not rushing you.
The, or, or we're figuring the budget this year, just like we did last year though. Yeah. We, I mean, we're using the same formula to figure it out. Right, right. The 20, the 24, the 24, 25, and the way we did that budget and the way we're doing the 25, 26 is, is pretty well identical.
There's some slight differences to it. We're getting, you know, more accurate to it. You know, I know Jen's probably looking to, to comment on that for us every year. For example, something that Dr. Bradley mentioned there, the collection rate, the more that we can, the more that we can fine tune that, like if it comes in at 96.5% and we see that consistently, we're going to bump it up. One of the things that like Jen mentioned was our, our, our state subsidies. So some of that information in the past, we may have been a little bit more conservative about. We, we now are budgeting to actually what PDE is, is telling us they're going to get us. So as you can see there, number of years ago, we were probably having, and I, and I know some of the veteran board members can attest to this, we were approving budgets that were at the five and six million dollar deficits and still coming in a lot. So as you can see there, last year, we only budgeted a 3.2, coming in a lot better. This year, again, we're trying our best to do that balanced budget. So there's some slight differences. Anything you want to add? You don't have to.
I just wanted to clarify this, how we budgeted for state, because in the past, we budgeted based on what we were, like if I would, in the past, what we did, 24, 25, what we're receiving this year is what we would put in for 25, 26. That's not what we did for next year. We took PDE's numbers and put them in the budget. So I don't see in BEF and special ed, a, a big variance there for next year unless the governor, unless, not, not the governor, but unless there's more money given out to school districts. At this point in time, we have budgeted what the governor had suggested in his, in his address. The only piece, as I mentioned, is that ready to learn adequacy piece. That's not in the budget. Other than that, it's, it's as accurate as it can be. And I, and I don't want to correct you, Mark, but I do need to point out that we're actually at 96.5% collection rate, actually a little bit higher. So I just had to, sorry.
She's into the details, that's why she's here. So Mr. Shear, to your point, so everything like that's on here, so as we're looking at, for example, for this budget projection that Jen went over, we are taking all this information and we're adding it to our current 25, 26. That's why we, we were able, my last week, I was able to take a look at all those positions and say, okay, we're going to be at about a 4.37. That was without any of this information. So or I shouldn't say without any of this, with all of this information. So as we had some of this information come in, like for example, one of the things that just came in, and I think it came in Wednesday or Thursday, is we, we got, there's a couple of new properties in the district, one really, a larger one down the street with some storage containers. The, the, we got the assessment update and we added that right to the budget. So in the past, sometimes I can tell you that to this point, that may not have been added. We are getting it as accurate as possible for you. No, we are, one of them, we are in year three, and that would be the Predix property. And then I believe year two for the North Point Amazon property. Right. So in every, and every year, every year that drops 10%. So, so every year an additional 10% in, in taxes come from those properties. Yeah, they started at, they started at 60% to remind the board that we started them at 60%. So the Predix property would be down to approximately 30, I think it's 30% this year, and then the North Point property would be at 40%. I'm, I'm sorry. We, we, yes, there are some in the New Salem area. I don't know when they're going to be actually, you know, turnkey ready. I did get a, a call from the county that we have another large developer that's looking for something very similar to that Lerta. Just wanted to know if the, you know, if we would be interested in doing that again. And I gave them the general response, yes, we would be interested in hearing more. We wouldn't be, you know, saying that we would be interested in doing a Lerta, but yes, we would be interested in learning more. If they're interested, coming to the, to the, to a board meeting to present, that's the only thing I heard. So. But yeah, if, if there are any, there are some properties, some larger properties, I know in the Jackson Township area, but to date, that's all I've heard.
Was any of the communication, those are 55 plus communities, or we're, we're unsure at this point?
For additional 55 plus?
Yeah.
I have not heard of any additional ones. No, just, just.
No, I was just, I thought I heard. I mean, thank you.
The one I was talking about was, was a Lerta, was a sports drink company. And then another one was a, a larger development in New Salem. So.
Thank you.
Good questions. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to now turn it over to, to Mrs. McAlwee. I'm going to stay up with her and she's going to present to you the nutrition services budget.
All right. Good evening again. Some of the things I'm going to go over as far as the agenda are the harvest of the month items, universal breakfast trending upward as they remain free until further notice, the opening of the Rocket Fuel IAC Cafe. Maintaining the national school lunch program with challenges that are ahead like tariffs, which also means that higher costs due to the cans, for example, are going to be going up. So common things that we typically purchase are tomatoes, soups, legumes, pineapple, just to name a few. And some of those costs could raise as high as 25%. And after the challenges, then we're going to go over the York County prices, the nutrition budget and next steps for the National School Lunch Program guidelines and maintaining the school breakfast program and National School Lunch Program with today's challenges. Here's just a couple of pictures of some of the things that our staff are doing, writing on bananas, just trying to promote healthy items and choices for students, our salad bar up at the high school, and then one of our elementaries, their fruit option. All right. For the harvest of the month, some of the items that we've promoted are featuring the apple nachos in October. So it was apple slices, yogurt, granola, and a little bit of caramel. Got students excited because it's something new in our school. Another thing in our SGE school, they did a winter squash promotion by actually taking the time on their own to decorate some winter squash. And they had the kids vote on what was, who the winner was. But essentially it promoted the students in eating more and trying new things. As far as March, we had National Dairy Month and also it was National Breakfast Week in the beginning. And there's just a few pictures of the students that participated in that week. Here's some numbers. I already briefly went over them, but you can see district wide is in the blue, we're trending up. The last section is only year to date through March. So we're not accounting for April and May, but we are seeing that numbers will be improving for this year as well, as they continue to be free. The next slide is about the Rocket I feel, IAC Rocket Fuel Cafe began in February. There are 31 students that are volunteering and they're learning different work skills. It's a work-based learning experience for students and they're receiving different services throughout learning support, life skills, autistic support, deaf, hard of hearing, emotional support and therapeutic and emotional support services. This gives an opportunity to help promote the student leadership up there as far as teamwork, voice and choice, novel student engagement, performing food service tasks while with the help of support as well. So they do things like stocking shelves, unloading orders, making deliveries, filling orders, counting change. Also daily interaction, but there's various different things that they do, and it is a really good work-life experience. It encourages positive social interactions and real-world job skills. So just touching base as far as some of the vendors that have reached out about tariffs that are coming. So Gold Star is one of our huge commodity vendors that we go through and they've already sent us notices, singer, which we got to get a lot of paper products from for various things. They're also showing that we're going to have increases in tariffs next year. I'm not sure to the degree on everything. But for example, I know for Gold Star, the canned goods are definitely something that they're, you know, letting us know that they are going to be increasing. So that in mind, meal costs could potentially be rising, not for next school year, but the following school year. Here's current meal prices in York, the York Counties and versus our school district. So elementary level versus our school district, we are showing a little bit lower, same with secondary. Our adult pricing is a little bit higher, but overall we are lower than the York County average. Here is the nutrition budget estimated for next year. Local revenues, just over a million. State revenues over 467,000, federal revenues 1.6 million. Total revenues are about 3.1. Salaries and benefits are at 1.6. Technical services over 10,000, purchased properties over 19, supplies and is over 1.5 and total is 3.28. And it is coming in at a loss of 121. Some things for approval of the nutrition services fund budget for the 25, 26 school year, our total revenues are 3.15 and expenditures are 3.2. And again, no increase in breakfast or no increase in breakfast and lunch meal pricing. Obviously breakfast is still free throughout next year. But lunch will just maintain until reevaluating next year. And we're looking for the final approval on May 19th. And as far as next steps, so there will be more guidelines coming. I have a webinar next week. It's next Tuesday and we'll be getting more guidelines as far as what will be changing, as far as whole grains, added sugars decreasing, sodium levels decreasing and stuff like that. So more to come. I can have an update for, in the future, but as of right now, I don't have any guidance to kind of give right now. And next step, just continue to monitor PD future guidance for, again, the sugar, sodium for next school year and any USDA program updates, tariffs on foods, canned goods, et cetera. Any questions? No?
I, I do. How, how in the world do we get up to 1,000 meal breakfasts a day? What, what's, what's triggering that? What, we know what's triggering that? Why are these, why are these kids coming to school without breakfast?
They're, they're free. Breakfasts are free.
Why, but why are we doing, I'm just saying, why are we doing that?
It's part of the school breakfast program.
Okay. So it's mandatory?
If you're in the National School Lunch Program.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Oh, at least, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Holly Lee, sir, I do want to thank her not only for her presentation at the very beginning with Kristen. I know they were very nervous. They did an outstanding job. I just want to say, over the past eight, nine months, both, both administrators have overseen their departments very well. I do want to give a shout out to Holly here. If you take a look at some of the things that she had talked about here, you see the food service department, not only are they educating our students and giving them fresh fruits and vegetables, but what they are doing here is they're supporting our local farmers. So you can see there Brown's Orchard with the apples, we support local beef. She talked about winter squash. We, we, we purchase a lot from Miller's Plant Farm. So keeping that tradition moving forward. And then the second thing that she showed you, which was a huge accomplishment this year, I had as one of her tasks was to work with the high school administration and let's get that IAC moving. And she did an outstanding job as she detailed there of getting those students involved and working with the high school and, and professional staff and the administration there and getting this rolling and a successful job. Just as she mentioned there, getting that started in February. So kudos to her and her department. So thank you, Holly. Okay. And then continuing on, if I can, Mr. White, while my computer Yep, opens up here. So we have two agreement contracts with River Rock. And we have brought that to the board's attention over the past number of years. If there are any operational questions, Dr. Ludwig is here that she can address those. If there's any contractual issues, I can address those. But does any of the board have any questions on either of those contracts?
Yeah, I guess I just might make a comment or two about the River Rock. People out in the audience might realize, but it's about $429,000 for 14 students per year. Am I correct on that? Or approximately? Yeah, mostly secondary and some elementary, which is about $30,000 a student. I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I know disruptive students are a problem and we have to do something about it. I totally agree. I'm, I'm not saying this is a bad thing. But I can't help but wonder if we are concerned about the district and, and spending money. Is there anything we can do to prevent so students don't get to that point? Because we're talking mostly secondary students. And when I see things on the budget, like the, and maybe this isn't the right mix and these persons, but we didn't go with the district-wide social worker. But I'm thinking that's the type of kids that probably end up at a place like River Rock, you know, are we, are we being short-sighted by not trying to prevent, you know, younger children to getting there? So I do have that concern. I bring it up. And I guess the question to me is, you know, disruptive students cause a lot of problems for the rest of our students and we can't have them there. We have to do something. So I guess I'm asking maybe for some feedback from the administration, you know, are we being short-sighted? Should we be spending a little more time and trying to, you know, address these students so we don't have problems? And it's not just problems when they get to high school, after they graduate, are these continuing to be problems for our whole society? So the, the job of us as educators is to get children educated. And if they're disruptive and they got problems, it's hard to educate them. So I'm just throwing it out there and I'm looking for any feedback. You know, should we be doing anything? Are we talking about this? I'm asking for feedback.
I'll try to get you something. Thank you.
And I would say to not necessarily to that end, but in terms of disruption and behavior problems, how are we trying to mitigate that with discipline? And are we doing a good job there in terms of, okay, if you do this, then you get this, right? And does the punishment fit the crime? Does that make sense? Like in terms of, it's, it's a question somewhat rhetorical, but do we have disciplinary measures for disruptions that the students can feel and therefore they don't want to do it again, right? That's, I mean, that's the basis of my question.
So, you know, I mean, we're not naive. I, I think we know that, you know, we have students that will violate the code of conduct. I think we know that, you know, we have students that will violate the code of conduct. And what I think our goal is to have consistency in application of that code of conduct and consequences. We'll also look at extenuating circumstances. We're humans, we're empathetic, we look at, you know, circumstances as well. But, you know, my observation in the last 10 months, we've been consistent, firm, fair and consistent with the application of the code of conduct. We also, you know, I think to Mr. Stein's point, when you build connections with students through classes, through extracurriculars, through co-curriculars, through clubs, you know, starting at the elementary level, working way up, you know, you never know who that student is making that connection with. It might be somebody in food service, it might be a bus driver, it might be an aide, it might be a teacher, it might be a principal. So they're making those connections that we're trying to help them make better choices. You know, and I think again, in my observation, the last 10 months, those things are taking place. Can they be more robust? Sure. Do I see an epidemic of people not applying the code of conduct or frivolousness with it? I don't see it. I think we'll all have anecdotal examples where someone will feel that they were, the code of conduct was applied more sternly with them or less sternly with one other student. We'll always have those anecdotal examples. But, you know, in my professional opinion, last 25 years, you know, where, you know, I don't think there's any large code of conduct conversation taking place at Spring Grove that where there's students that are running rampant or anything like that. I think we're gonna have students that violate the code of conduct. You're gonna have administrators that apply the consequence for those code of conduct. You're gonna have parents that agree with that application of the consequence and you're gonna have parents that disagree with that application. And then we try to find resources for those students within our buildings. So we're not making referrals outside of our buildings willy-nilly or at first blush. And then ultimately, when their code of conduct is impacting not only their education, but the others in their classrooms, then the referral may be appropriate. At times, a challenging aspect of that is a student with special needs that if it's a manifestation of their disability, then, you know, we may see that student re-enter because their ability to decide right or wrong or their, whatever their disability may be, the determination is a manifestation of that, of that disability. So they're the reason that they violated our code of conduct. You can't punish somebody for their disability. So that gets frustrating at times as a dad. That has been frustrating to me. So, you know, I think that it's something we always work on, we talk about it quite often. You know, on an individual basis, principals are contacting myself or Dr. Guanadino, you know, about that application, about what they had and how they're applying it. And then the other sources, parents reach out, they go through the, they go through the chain of command and then ultimately we'll go to myself or Dr. G. And we work with the parents, you know, that are very satisfied and sometimes they're not satisfied.
I have just one thing. I know that launch, the launch program at the high school is more for maybe, and if I'm wrong in saying this wrong, apologies, more that at-risk student base. Do we have that at the middle school? We do. Thank you. Awesome. Don't say it, don't say it, Alan.
Yes. Okay. I had, I had a question. I see we pre-purchased the slots. Did we purchase the same number as last year?
Well, I have three lessons.
Totally random question, but it had my mind going. If a student, can a student get kicked out of River Rock? And if they do, who's responsible for that care? Out of pure curiosity?
Us.
We do. We do the, the next placement, whether that's a residential, I'm assuming here. It might be. Okay.
I mean, it may be court adjudicated at that point. It may be court adjudicated and the court would determine what that placement is. And, you know, just as we just spoke about with Kristen Pepperman, then we're transporting them as well. So, you know, again, that is then borne to our community. So, and, and Dr. Ludwig, with that test class, we've also worked out a revenue stream potentially. If you could comment on that, not to put you on the spot, but if you could comment. With all due respect.
Question for you, okay? So we've gone through this whole cycle with music and a lot of the presenters that, you know, start music young because it, your brain develops and, you know, you, it, it just turns into academic success. There are many different successes. When we talk about discipline, I kind of am putting it in that same realm where if we can work harder on that elementary base of setting expectations of discipline, does the outcome help the end result? And are we doing enough on the elementary side to deter the bad, I hate saying bad behavior, but lack of better terms, on, on that secondary level? If we're seeing a trend there? And I'm not saying that we're not doing a great job. I don't know. That's why I'm questioning it. Yeah, and I mean, to that point, the vapes, when the sensor goes off, I'm hearing from, you know, someone who lives in my household, if he's in the restroom at the same time, it goes off, the administration needs to pull down every, but, sorry, everyone that was in the bathroom at that time. So we're taking the time of our administrators to talk to two to maybe six male, female students who were in the bathroom at the same time as that one student who decided to use the vape to figure out who it was. So that's, it's time-consuming to discipline. I'm just, again, we're talking about River Rock here. We could go into a whole tangent on discipline and the time that it takes and how do we, how do we do it the right way? But, um, yeah, um, but the River Rock, I want to side, I sidebar'd, sorry. Anyone else have comments, questions about River Rock?
Nothing about River Rock, but I will say, when we're talking 14 students out of 3,900, I don't think our kids are too bad. Some of them just make bad mistakes and it might only be one time, so.
Yep.
Well said, Mr. Sheeran, well said.
Moving forward, Mr. White, so our next is our school depository. So every year, we bring the, the board, the appointment of our school depositories. You have the listing there of the four for the 25-26 year. If there's any questions, I can answer about any of those school depositories. Okay, seeing none. The next one is the appointment of our auditing firm, I believe. Yep, so, um, prepared a memo there. The board is asked to consider the appointment of our district auditors for the 25-26 year. The proposed is, as you can see, there are 13,150. It's an increase of $100 from, from last year. If there's any questions, I can answer. Our firm is Cockinaw, Ernest Mizer and Berg. Okay, and then, oh, last thing there, we have the disposal of the technology equipment. As per our board policy, I believe it's 706.1. Yes, this is there. We bring to you each year any obsolete or outdated equipment. This year, we currently have the listing there for technology equipment. Mr. Anke can answer any specific questions that you may have on the specific technology equipment. Okay, no questions? And then the last is the reappointment of Board Treasurer, which would be myself. Board Treasurer, Mr. White, sorry, Mr. White.
Yeah.
Wow, I was like, all right, taking on new.
Sorry, okay, so Board Treasurer, Mr. White.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Management Committee Policy with Mrs. Baum.
All right, thank you. We will start with Mr. Stiles, who's going to give us an update on the MOU with the local law enforcement. And then we'll move to Mr. Zap for the Health and Safety Plan and the Board Secretary and the PSBA Delegate Assembly.
Okay, so we, we met with Chief Flash last week. This is, this MOU is, is updated every two years. He was satisfied with no change again for, for this, for this cycle. It just basically goes over the priorities of what's responsibility is at the police department, what the, what the priorities are of the school, how to handle incidents. And, um, again, what the responsibilities are for both entities handling situation. Moren, it's, uh, it's MOU, random of understanding. Any questions?
Okay, so the next one is the required review of the Health and Safety Plan there. So I have listed PCCD grant. That should be the ESER grant compliance. Every year since 2021, in 2021, we had to do a, by receiving federal ESER funds. The state required us to have a Health and Safety Plan. So every year, we bring this back. As the board is aware, our ESER funds, we completed them in September of 2024. So you're asking, why are we still renewing this? It's because PDE has a requirement that until we have our final closeout of, and that's the final closeout of auditing all the books, we have to continually review and, and, and vote to approve the Health and Safety Plan. So that has to remain a living document. So you have that Health and Safety Plan in front of you. Nothing has changed since 2021. It would be an update to approve in May, the, the required Health and Safety Plan. Are there any questions for that Health and Safety Plan? Yeah. Correct, we have to check the box in order, and, and this is going to continue until we have our final closeout with PDE. So I'm hoping this is the last time, but, you know, it really depends on how quickly PDE closes out our ESER, our ESER monitoring. So having the hundreds of school districts that they have in Puyai, we may be doing this for a few more times, but no money's attached to it. And now, there is reappointment of Board Secretary, Mr. Zap, so, okay. No questions on that? And then last, I brought this up last month, we have the PSB, PSBA Delegate Assembly. You have that memorandum, nothing has changed since that. We still have the opportunity for two board members to represent Spring Grove at that assembly. If you are interested, let myself or Mrs. Sternner know here as soon as possible. And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any board members have items for planning? All right, before we adjourn, just to, we do need to have a, an executive session with Dr. Bradley for personnel immediately following. I don't foresee it being too long and I know that you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick statement to the community and to, you know, our employees that are assembled. I wanted to thank Kristen and Holly again for your presentation. Thank you. And that, that is the second iteration of an effort of departments and buildings to provide as much information as we can to the community and to the board as they make the best decisions as they can. Third, third, thank you, Dr. G, the third iteration of those presentations. So we'll begin to see them and it'll be SOP. So, so they will just become what we do. You know, we have a presentation and that particular department will present their, not only their highlights and their celebrations, which we're glad to hear, but also their challenges. And they'll make a connection to what the board has already approved or made an expenditure for. So we appreciate that. And one of those examples, you know, that I thought when, when Kristen was presenting was stop-arm violations. So obviously, we do not want, you know, drivers to, you know, have those stop-arm violations because it could be very tragic. And we are, we have the technology on our buses to do that and Christ has been very supportive with that as efforts. And it takes work on their part as well to help with those stop-arm violations. And then there's a revenue that comes from the, the fine. So we receive some of the revenue back on those stop-arm violations. And that's just one small thing that the board, you know, worked on and they approved and they worked with the, the transportation contract to have those stop-arm technology installed. And then my last comment was, you know, under the leadership of Mrs. Baum, in the Policy Committee, we are strongly looking at, you know, cataloging, hosting and broadcasting our board meetings. I know I've lived with it for the last 10 years of my career. It just, again, it becomes standard operating procedure, become more comfortable. You're always gonna mess up the English language, so just, you know, get comfortable with that. And then it will be cataloged and accessible by the, the community when they're not able to attend our meetings. And that's something we look forward to, massaging and making sure it's the right fit for us here at Spring Grove. And I thank the community for attending tonight, thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.